It is now nine fifty-seven, day six of budget workshop for the Brazos County Commissioners Court will resume. Ms. Payne.
Welcome back. Our next up is going to be public transportation. Public transportation is ten percent of the general fund. This house has the Roden Bridge admin portion as well as the fleet shop heavy equipment. First up is going to be the administration for Roden Bridge. Total decrease to the budget is one point five million dollars, which is a negative five percent compared to last year. Overall is thirteen point six-two. I will ask Prathana to come up and describe or go into detail regarding her budget real quick.
Good morning.
Good morning. Prathna Banerjee, county engineer. I have good news. We are reducing it by one point five million dollars.
Great way to start.
I guess I'm even very short, and that's, you know, why top it up with anything? I can't really, you know. But if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer. If you want to go, any line item, we can certainly visit.
Commissioners, any points y'all want to look at specifically?
Well, I just saw the repairs and maintenance down nine fifty-three. How is that? I was shocked by that.
Yeah, so actually, if you go back to that bridge maintenance line item, you'll see that we actually rolled over one point three-ish million dollars last year because we had a lot of, our SCAR projects actually started very late in the fiscal year. And so we had to roll over one point three million out of the, you know, the budget that was given last year. So it added one point three million to that line item. So actually, we added four hundred and two thousand dollars to the maintenance and, you know, budget, the Roden Bridge maintenance, general maintenance, which is basically our, you know, tree cutting and, you know, coal mix and seal coat. All of that has really become very expensive. Like our everyday life, you know, building a road is very expensive nowadays, and just maintaining basic road items are also very expensive. So even though we are increasing that particular maintenance general line item by four hundred thousand dollars because of bridge maintenance, we balanced out the projects this year, and so moving forward, we don't, won't need that rollover. And that's the reason overall, there's a decrease of nine hundred and sixty, fifty-three?
Nine hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred.
Five hundred, yeah.
And the box car, culverts on Democrat are even in this?
They are on, yes, yes.
No, I just wanted you to explain that to everybody.
That's actually our capital.
No, I mean, I meant the overall that you just explained. I just wanted everybody to hear.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, okay, yeah.
That the county's not walking away from maintaining roads.
No, 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 no. No, no. We are replacing those culverts this year, actually, and the actual road project is on fiscal year for the, for the next year, the Capitol Road Project.
Yeah. And, yeah, that's great.
Commissioners, any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Ms. Payne.
Okay, the next up is going to be the fleet shop heavy equipment, increase of two hundred, twenty-four thousand dollars. I'm sorry, two percent compared to last year. Point five-one compared overall. And I will ask Ken Chawak to come up and explain or your team.
Looks like we get Dwayne.
That's, when you're about to retire, you just go.
That's called good leadership. It's good leadership. Delegation.
Name an ID.
Dwayne Holloway, Assistant Fleet Manager. And our number's a whole lot smaller. Our budget's staying the same this year. We've moved a few things around just to make them all balance. The training, we moved some from computer contracts or contract services up to tires to cover those costs. And everything else, like I said, just moved around pretty much to balance it out. Any questions?
Commissioners.
You know how I feel about that department. I mean, you guys doing a great job.
Absolutely.
And for all you're doing and increasing less than thirty grand with all the prices of everything as high as they're going up and everything else.
Yes, sir.
Just great work.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now you have me for this next section. I'm sorry. So the next up is going to be public health. There are several divisions that I will go into detail. Public health is a, it's four percent of the overall general fund budget. First off is going to be the Health Department Support. This is our in-cost, in-kind that we contribute to the Health Department. In other words, we cover for postage and shipping, covering insurance, telephone long-distance, utilities, because it's our building, the external auditor. It's an increase of seventeen thousand dollars for supplies and other chain, other charges is because we had to go out for professional liability insurance for the Health Department. The two hundred thousand dollars is for the forty-ton HVAC package unit replacement that we discussed earlier last week. Any questions regarding the Health Department?
Commissioners.
Inigent healthcare. This is where I like to touch y'all a little bit. There is a statute that states that inigent healthcare, we have to reserve at least eight percent of our ad of alarm taxes, which is currently close to about nine million, nine point two million. But also in this statute, it states that we do not have to budget it. For years, we have been budgeting the eight percent, but we have only been spending close to two million each year, between one point five and two million. And so this is where I like to ask the court, would you, would it be best for us to keep budgeting at nine percent? Because once we get to the eight percent of our costs, that's when we start asking for reimbursement from the state. What I do want to make a note is that the county auditor reserves five million and, and reserves to help cover the five million that's budgeted in the expenditure portion of it, I would recommend us dropping this back down from nine point two to five million. And we continually watch it as years go by. And I would like to at least have between a two point five and three, three million cushion because there's, that's the unknown. We don't know what the inigent cost will be moving forward. And so I like to have a cushion because if we don't budget it, we can't spend it. And so I like to bring it back down to five million, which would save us a little bit, four point two million.
I agree with every word of that. And watching performance, or I guess need, in coming years, if we see it creeping up, that's something that we can respond to. But with that kind of cushion, we have the time to respond without digging in, yeah.
Correct.
I assume if we had another COVID-type incident where we had to muster a lot of medical resources, we would be able to access that if we declared an emergency here?
So within fund balance, Ms. Marcy will go over that Wednesday. We already have a reserve for emergencies, and the only way that we can touch that emergency is if the court makes it an emergency. Okay, so that's totally different. Have we ever, we've, have we ever dipped into the emergency fund balance? I don't think, not that I've been here. We found the money within certain programs to cover the expenses throughout the year like COVID.
Does that grow every year?
It's dependent on your revenues. Is it revenues or expenditures? Revenues. So it's whatever revenues we're bringing, the previous years, so it will grow.
Do you know how much is in that account right now?
We'll go over that Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
No, thank you.
It's not my, it's the auditor's revenues, and she'll go a little bit more detail Wednesday.
Commissioners, any other questions? So we will drop that line down to five million.
We'll drop it down to five million. That four point two will be back in the budget. Sound good?
Thank you.
Yay. The Are You Okay program, the Sheriff's Office absorbed this position last year, so it's a zero cost. Forensic Services, this is for the, for the future medical examiner's building. This is going to be for the physicians, there's five physicians, as well as some costs. The costs are unknown until the building is stand, stood up. The eleven thousand dollars is to help get us computers, scanners, printers, day-to-day operations until we really know what this office will need when we hire the person. Regarding the environmental protection, this is under Roden Bridge, but I can go into a little bit more detail. It's a decrease to the budget, thirteen hundred dollars. This helps support the trash collection sites that we have throughout the county. We also have a contract with 505. This is part of that, and this also helps us purchase trash tickets. Any questions on that part?
Thank you.
And this is also for the Harvey Community Center contract that we have.
Which community center?
Harvey Center. Harvey Community Center, excuse me. Total increase to the budget is nine percent, which is ten million, point, ten point five million for next year. Any questions regarding the public health?
No.
Okay. Next up is going to be Human Services. This is for the veterans, and I want to grab my stuff real quick. This department is under the county judge, and so I'll go over the increases for this one, which is just seven thousand dollars. They have been running crazy. As I'm sure that Pam explains to y'all the good things that they're doing for the community. The main increase is to help them get a additional license for their Vet Pro subscription, as well as they're going to have a department policy for uniforms so that people will recognize who they are when they go to the A&amp;M campus, when they're out and about, so they're made aware. Any questions regarding the veteran services?
Commissioners?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Boomville Heritage Park, it's increased of ninety-seven thousand dollars. What this increase will do is, we have some buildings out there that the roofs are in pretty bad shape, and so this is for us to start replacing those roofs on those buildings. Any questions regarding that?
Commissioners?
No.
Thank you.
Next up is going to be the County Fire Protection. We had the volunteer fire departments come in back in May, and in their discussion, it was discussed to award each volunteer fire department additional ten thousand dollars. And so that's where the forty thousand dollar comes up. Any questions regarding the County Fire Protection?
Nope.
Commissioners, thank you.
County Welfare, no increase to the budget. Emergency Management, this is an increase of five thousand dollars, which you could tell that majority of it went to the COLA that was received. One percent compared to last year and point three zero percent overall. And I will ask Emergency Management to come up.
Mr. Ware, welcome.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Jason Ware, Emergency Management Coordinator for Brazos County. When Nina came to me and said, Jason, you need to find areas to trim your budget, I was like, oh, boy. Because Emergency Management has always run a very tight budget. So trying to find areas to, to trim my budget was a little difficult, especially with the turnover that we've had with Michelle retiring and then throughout the year last year. Happy to say that as of September third, we will be fully staffed and of a party of three. So when we go to lunch, I can say a party of three, it'd be great. So most of the, of the things up there are decreases within our budget. Areas that I've requested an increase will be like clothing and uniforms. So that way, with the new folks coming on, I can not only get new uniforms, but keep what uniforms that we have up to standard. So that way, when we're in front of the community, doing our outreach events and presentation and stuff, we look sharp. Because I really believe that, that so it makes a presence for not only Emergency Management, but Brazos County as a whole. But with new staff coming onboard and myself, being at conferences, trainings and stuff, that's a very important thing, learning the new, new ways of doing things. So I've requested an increase in the, in the conferences. I want to get, there's a new conference, not a new conference, but a new conference for Emergency Management called Alert Conference. It's geared toward the active shooter realm of things. It's mostly geared toward law enforcement, but there's an Emergency Management component to it. And so I would like to, that increase of only six hundred and fifty bucks, so having the Sheriff's Office present before I came up here is great because they've got big numbers. I've got little numbers. I was able to, to reduce my budget by thirty-five hundred dollars in the equipment maintenance side of things. So most of that equipment maintenance side of things was geared toward our shower restroom trailers, which I was able to get up and functional out of this budget. So I actually reduced my budget by about thirty-five hundred dollars when it came to that. So the only other large increase was on computer contracts as far as Code Red Emergency Notification System. And that was just a, an increase that came from Code Red. Outside of that, everything else were very small, minute reductions here and there that we were picking and choosing as we were going through my budget. Nina's like, do you really need that? Do you really need this? Can you reduce it by a couple hundred bucks here? So we were able to, to reduce, you know, a couple hundred here, a couple hundred here. So we were able to reduce it quite a bit. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
No question, but just a comment. To your point about y'all's uniform, I was, I had a meeting at the COG, but I ended up, and I think the Homeland Security Meeting didn't know where I was. But looking around the room and hearing the different agencies that collaborate with you all in Brazos County and from the other counties, it was so, the evident, it was so obvious that those who are dressed like you are today, it, it had a presence, and there were a few people who were not. And they looked almost out of place. And to me, it did not lend the prominence of what you guys do to those who did not look as crisp as you look today.
When, you know, when TDM shows up during emergencies, or when, when we have a disaster, tornado here in Brazos County, and, and we show up in the middle of nighttime, you'll, what I'm wearing now, or polo shirt, that's the way TDM shows up. That's the way we, I want our folks to show up in the middle of nighttime.
It just stood out, yeah.
It's a presence, and it's a uniform presence. And that's the way I want our folks to look like when we show up, not ragged t-shirts and stained.
Is it Texas Tax Force One?
Yes, ma'am. Same, same, same folks. Same, same uniform presence.
From head to toe.
Very big on that, yes, ma'am.
Right, so thank you for noting that. And of course, I, you know, by accident, it made me aware of the importance of what you all do. So thank you for that.
And if you don't know me, you can still read my shirt.
I know, I can see from here, because, believe me.
All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ware.
Yes, I asked the departments to find money where we can cut, and he came kicking and screaming, but he left with a smile, so I guess it's okay.
He's brave. He called out the SO and he went and sat right next to him.
The next up is going to be Exposition Center. There is an increase of ten million dollars to the budget. I do want to make a note that ten million is due to the deferred maintenance that the Commissioners Court has approved. And so essentially, the increase is just over forty thousand dollars, which is a three hundred and thirty-four percent increase compared to last year's budget, six point five-three percent compared overall. As well as the fair, the fair has increased by sixteen thousand, and that's just for SARI benefits. I will ask for the Expo to come up and explain their budget.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Jaclyn Foster, Brazos County Expo, Brazos Valley Fair. All right. So we did try to cut as well. There was a few things that we relocated or moved some funds around to cover some issues. Let's see. So we cut our supplies and other charges by a little over fourteen thousand. We moved some of the funds and event supplies over to our solid waste. We were able to cut equipment and IT enhancement by eight thousand five hundred. And our cell phone allowance, we were able to cut that by a thousand. So we did increase our printing, but that was by three hundred dollars. So repairs and maintenance, we went down twenty-one thousand, a little over. Building maintenance, we went down twenty thousand, and because we have the deferred maintenance that's going to be taking place. And then radio maintenance, down a thousand, as well as tires, we went down three hundred. So we didn't spend it all last year, so we were able to decrease that some. Contract services, we moved some funds around. As I mentioned, the event supplies, we moved down to solid waste. And then we relocated some of the maintenance funds into the grease traps. Those have been our biggest issues. So the main increases are salaries, of course, the deferred maintenance, and then we increased the, the printing. So. And then on the fair, we have the funding agreement between And then on the fair, we have the funding agreement between the county and the fair. And that is Jerry Minaris. So the main thing with the fair was originated, they had a steering committee in 2010. And in 2011, they formed an executive board. And the main thing is that the agreement is that the county will pay for the fair's salaries. We have a general manager, a manager, assistant manager, and a sponsorship coordinator. So they pay for their health insurance and other benefits equivalent to that of county employees. They're treated as county employees. They submit time like county employees. So they reap all the benefits. But then as far as putting on the fair, that's up to them to get those sponsorships.
Do they work year-round?
Yes, sir.
They do?
Yes, and they are to help the expo on kind of the off-season. They do work all year round in trying to get judges and entertainment and things like that. But when we need them, they're in there, ready to help.
So they actually come into an office and work every day?
Yes, sir. Yes. And like, as I mentioned, if, say, somebody calls in sick and we need help setting up tables and chairs or something along those lines, or when we're selling shavings and RV spaces, a lot of times they'll man the register for us as well. Any questions?
Commissioners? Thank you, Jac. Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Have a great day.
Okay, next up is going to be the Brazos Center. They have them in their main portion increase, it's actually a decrease, sorry, decrease of $36,000, negative 3%, .61% increase overall. I will ask for Brazos Center to come up and explain their decreases.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I'm Joanna Spencer, Director of the Brazos Center.
Good morning.
We do have a decrease of $36,293. A bulk of that was in supplies and other charges, $52,287. We also had a decrease in repairs and maintenance of $9,210. We do have, in contract services, we will be rolling over the $250,000 for the parking lot. That's all we have.
Commissioners, any further questions?
Good job.
No, good job.
Well done.
And tomorrow, you will notice on the agenda that we have a proposal for rate increases moving forward.
Looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is going to be the county agricultural extension. Administration portion of it, increase to the budget $17,553, which is going to be due to the cost of living. 3% compared to last year's budget and .36% overall. And I think I, come on up.
Chad is here. Good morning.
Morning. How are y'all? Like she said, our only increase is within the salaries.
Please state your name for the listening audience. I'm sorry.
Chad Caperton, Brazos County Extension Ag Agent. So the only increase we have is within that salary section. Is there any questions?
Commissioners? Nope, thank you.
We do have some movement within the facilities line item. We have partnered with Brazos Valley Fair with one of our major programs that had some extensive cost for facilities. They have agreed to host us during the fair week, which I think is going to be a great event. So we were able to move that money and supply some other new programs that we're going to use those facility costs for in the FCH program. So just kind of moving that around, playing a little chess game, keeping costs down.
And that will be March?
The Brazos Valley, the Pizza Ranch is the event that I was talking about, moving to the Brazos Valley Fair Week. I believe it's Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes, so what is it, the 8th and 9th?
And how many students do we entertain that week?
So the record, record has been 1,500. COVID hit us hard, so we're building that back up. Last year, we hosted 600. This year, we've got a projected 600 to 800.
Excellent.
So we're going to actually have to expand to two days instead of one. So that's a good problem to have.
Great problem. And those are fourth graders?
Fourth graders, yes, sir. From the Brazos Valley, not just Brazos County. So we pull from the surrounding counties. It's a really great event.
Absolutely.
I would invite all of y'all to come out and take a look. Get you a slice of pizza, too.
A slice of agriculture.
That's right, exactly.
Thank you, Chad.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions? I'm sorry. Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is going to be Top Protective Services. There's no increase. It's been flat for the last several years for $50,000. Next up is Family Protection Services. This is going to be Scotty's House, I believe. Yes, Scotty's House, which they came and presented back in May. It was discussed to increase their budget by $9,250. And folks, that's it.
Day six.
As in we're done for the day?
As in we're done with the general fund. Keep in mind, the general fund is our biggest, you know, fund that we have. Requested budget for this year, without me taking away the 4 million. And so I'll send y'all an updated worksheet. It was 196 million, but now it's going to decrease by 4 million. And so compared to last year's budget, it's a small increase. And so I'll send everybody an updated sheet regarding the 4 million that will decrease out of inigent healthcare.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Payne and her team as we conclude day six?
We conclude day six. I want to thank the departments for working with the budget office and finding cuts where needed to be and promising them that they will be okay and will work around what they have currently in their budget.
Perfect. Commissioners, final priority, justice. Ms. Payne, are we done? And it is 10:25, and day six of the budget workshop of the Brazos County Commissioners Court is now adjourned.